I am going to add at this point, Angela wrote us a really nice letter that accompanied the material and it said, so mark this, you guys remember, it said go NG. So we will expect you to be there.
That might be a better chance.
You better not do it in swimming or you'll be a troublemaker.
I visited a tech class last week when I was over there. One of the students asked, I got to talk about NABADU choir, the guys in the tech guy classes as well. And one of the kids in the class told me, where do you live? So I kind of went around the country where I live and then I said, and now I live in St. Monolongo. And they're saying, what are you doing? Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to serve here and I appreciate very much all of your support.
Can we call on you to take notes and make records at one of our committee meetings?
I'll be there. I'll have my computer.
All right. So with that, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda or do you want, did you have something else you wanted?
Well, I guess, did you want to recognize that we're going to, our NG 21, I'm sure everyone's been here too. And then, do you want to say anything about Josh Fassell?
Thank you. It's not, you're right, I was looking at the resignations. Thank you very much. Another announcement, in the consent agenda, you'll see a contract for our Dane County School Consortium, which is a school to work program for the directorship, a contract for Josh Fassell, who is our current, a current business education teacher in the high school. And the reason you don't see a resignation is because we're the fiscal agent, so he essentially is still going to be an employee for the district, so it's technically a transfer. But nonetheless, we'd like to publicly recognize Josh as well for being named into, or being hired into that position. That's a consortium of 16 school districts in Dane County and it's a great opportunity and we're very proud of Josh as well and a great leadership for him in that position.
Well deserved.
Yeah. Thank you Susan for the reminder.
He'll be missed as a teacher in our.
He certainly will.
He leaves another hole. Okay, then, we didn't get a motion yet. Do we have a motion to approve of consent? Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in seconded, that we approved the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Opposed? Motion carries. Correspondence and announcements, do you have anything?
I have none tonight.
Okay. Anybody else?
The musical.
I was going to say the musical's coming up.
Sweet.
Next week, the ninth, the ninth is the first night, I think. I have tickets for the ninth, so it's the first night. Anyway, high school musical, which everybody, if you haven't seen one, for sure, even if you have seen one, I'd highly recommend it. It's always spectacular. Then, if nobody else has anything, Susan?
I just want to say too, with the nicer weather, I've been out in the district and walking in the district quite a bit and I think probably you guys have been too, but I have met so many students in the last two weeks who are out exercising and, I mean, I bet the girls on the track team, the new track coach, they go to run basketball. So again, these kids have been so polite and so pleasant, I mean, if an adult comes up to you and says hello, I'm Susan Manning, I'm on the school board, you know, they are so polite and so nice and anyway, so I've been really impressed with the students that I'm, I know they're out there, but we don't always get to see them. So it's been a great opportunity just the last couple of weeks to just reconnect with a lot of the families.
I had a similar experience with the local girl, young mom girl, whose mother introduced me, she knew me, and says, she's waiting for the bus at the corner and she introduces me and says, this is Mr. Bowles, he's on the school board. You're the one that caused us to get on, start school so early.
Yeah, I've heard that from my own. I'm lucky I wasn't so late. First time.
All right. Then on to board reports. Last Wednesday, I think, was the WSB Day at the Capitol and both Dan and I attended that. And if you want to say, in the morning, there were presentations from someone from DPI about the budget. There are some budget comments and your administrative content here. There is certainly a lot of concern throughout the state about both the university and K-12. And actually, interestingly, when I talk to people about it, I think probably more attention seems to be being paid to the university or in the minds of a lot of people. A lot of people aren't really realizing how serious the K-12 situation is. And that, and maybe because of the way it was presented, it was presented as essentially flat and there was an increase touted for the second year, but as we've talked about already here, that increase goes to property tax relief, not one penny of it will come to us in additional aid because the revenue caps are not being lifted at all for either year. And we are also losing $150 this year in categorical aid that was, it's way too complicated to sort of explain right now, but that was above the revenue limit. We're losing that this year. We had counted on, all districts generally were counting on receiving that again because that had been the indication that we would receive it again. So that's a blow. And then, in the second year of the biennium, we'll get $165 per student, but averaged over the biennium, that amounts to $135 per student loss. So from Anonah Grove, it's almost $500,000 loss. For most, for a lot of districts that have been reporting in, it's been roughly that, two, two million to more, several million depending on the district. So it's, clearly, there is a major cut in K-12 education and there's no other way to say it. It is a cut and there is property tax relief. At the Day at the Capitol, we hear the presentation on the budget and then WSB sets up appointments for us to meet with our legislators. We were all encouraged to contact members of the Joint Finance Committee, which this board already did. We had already sent a resolution. One of their last meetings is tomorrow in Reedsburg and I may, I have something in the morning, I may try to go up there, but we've already put input in. But they were encouraging presence of, and they are, they are having a number of school superintendents and school board members have been showing up at these hearings. None of them are in Dane County. So they're hearing this from around the state, but that, you know, one of the issues is the governor apparently has been very firm that he wants to give that average of a $5 per person property tax refund, and it is an average of $5 per person and maybe as much as 10 for some people, for the year. And he will not increase taxes. So when I say to people, because I was hearing from some legislators, there's some thought that they may give us that $150 per student back, but then if they're, if the governor has said, and he has apparently said he will veto any legislation that increases property taxes. So then, the question is, well, then where would that money come from? So I don't know how optimistic we can be that we'll get any of that back. I guess I'm not feeling too optimistic, even though I'm hearing from some even Republican legislators that, well, we think we can maybe do something. But again, the challenge will be, okay, well, where, where are you going to get that money if you're not willing to raise property taxes at all? Or at least keep property taxes flat if you're, if you're not willing to cut them. I mean, if you're insisting you have to cut them as opposed to leaving them the way they are, where is that money going to come from? So I don't know if you have anything?
Yeah, and that's what I've heard from some of my colleagues around the state too, who do have, they're representatives that are, you know, on a joint finance, that they do understand that this is a cut to schools and the significance. The big question is, well, where's the money going to come from? I think they all want to build or restore it. The question is, can they? And so, we'll see. I think we're going to find out soon where the Joint Finance Committee stands on this and hopefully we'll get some relief.
Yeah, that's about all. Otherwise, I, I think the only other thing that we can do as board members and that you guys in the audience can do if you're listening is, is talk to our neighbors and talk to people when you get the opportunity, because a lot of people really don't understand that and school finance is complicated. But I think just making the point that while this was played as an increase and played as flat, it is not flat, it is a cut. The one thing we did try to talk to our legislators, because our three legislators are all, they get it, they're with us on this, they understand, they would like to see more attention paid to public schools. And the message I tried to take was, you know, I get that you're in the minority party and, but we need a champion. We need people talking about this all the time. We need to make the connection between public education and jobs and the economy, that the state will not thrive if K-12 education is allowed to go down the tubes. And that's where it's headed. I mean, it is that serious and we really need to keep making that point. And I think, I asked our legislators, whenever you get the chance, just talk about this, make that connection, because it seems like it should be obvious, but it apparently isn't. So I think that's a job that we all need to take on ourselves as we talk to people. Jessica?
Yeah, and Susan, I really, really want to thank you for your strong, you know, sense of advocacy in the community and, and the work that you have done in this regard. It's very admirable to me that you're a passion, your commitment to it, and I think that you are one of those champions and I thank you.
Well, thank you. It's like hitting your head against a wall, but, but it's worth it, but you got to keep doing it.
Right.
Well, and that's my point too. I think, I think we can't just not say anything because then they can come back and say, well, we didn't hear anything from people. And so it's important that people speak up on this stuff. Thank you, I appreciate that.
We may know more after the South Carolina primary.
Yeah, we might. That's a little ways off. That's, and that's one of the problems, I think, that all, that, you know, we have too many months to wait. So they won't have the budget done by then. Okay. Unfinished business and the first item is discussion and possible approval of the preliminary 2015-16 certified staffing plan?
Okay, I just want to emphasize that this is still preliminary plan. What we're looking for tonight in approval is really an approval of the concept of, that we need to add these six additional teaching positions in order to maintain our class sizes within our guidelines and that we will not hire any teachers until we have firm, you know, a more firm budget, you know, outlook, but at least we can begin the process of posting and start that, so we can move forward, so we're not waiting so late. And so we will, as we get budget information, we'll continue to talk about this. We have not, you know, there's no recommendation for any specialist positions. I'm not saying that will come forward, but we're still going to continue looking at those as well, you know, throughout the spring. But these are the ones that are clearly identifiable that with our class sizes, we need these positions to maintain those guidelines. So we are asking for approval tonight of this as, as a preliminary plan.
Okay, so could we have a motion to approve the preliminary 2015-16 staffing plan as presented? Second?
Second.
It's moved in seconded. Comment, Susan?
Well, my only question is, and I really, really appreciate us doing this and doing this early and doing this separate from other staffing issues so that we can just focus on the class size and how that's being addressed. And it, I think there's been significant improvement at the high school and the class sizes, but, you know, in all honesty, when you continue to look at this, if you're a student doing advanced work, college, advanced college writing, you're going to be in a great big class. How can you possibly assign a five-page paper to 30 kids or, you know, honors English? There are 31 students in that class. So I guess I'm continuing to see, you know, numbers in particularly in the advanced programming, pre-calculus or maybe it's calculus, 30 kids. I guess my question is, is it .4? Is that enough?
Sure. Great question. And I guess there's two things to keep in mind. Number one, these are course requests, not final course enrollments. And so one of the things on some of those, those numbers will come down as students, you know, finalize their schedules. And that's something that Dr. Ross does go through with every department, those numbers. And the departments, the teachers with him make their recommendations on how many sections. And so on some of those, we have approximately 30 requests. And so the question is, well, do we have two sections of only 15 versus, is that, are we better served having an additional section of another class? And so all those recommendations, the teachers or the department coordinators and working with their colleagues are on board and making these recommendations. And so there is not a restriction given to the high school saying you can only have a .4 FTE. If there's needed an additional section in any of these departments to go to .5 or .6 or .7, I would bring that forward to the board. They're certainly trying to be prudent and not have, you know, more than necessary, but this is based on the recommendation from the teachers themselves in those departments and what they think they need to efficiently, you know, manage those courses, so.
And can you continue to, since it is so preliminary, just continue to monitor that? Because really, if you look at the classes, where the numbers are at and the fact that we don't, to the best of my understanding, we don't have a dedicated gifted and talented programming person specifically addressing the, that at the high school. I just want to make sure we're looking.
Sure.
Okay. Jessica, anything? Dean?
Question I had, when I, when I looked through this, the format of this preliminary plan is a little different than the one we had last year. And the one you had last year had, had more than just the class sizes. It had TOSs and it had deans and that's the deans of students and that sort of thing. Is that still in process or is it, or is it assumed that it's no change or, or both of those or what?
Yeah. Great question. For this year, given our current budget scenario, it would be no change in those other positions. This would be it. We felt last year was an opportunity to really, in some respects, bring back some positions with lower class size, others, as you know, were some new positions to provide support in needed areas. And so for this year, we feel comfortable right now with kind of a status quo in those other areas, given that we think it's going to be a really lean budget. And so this would be it. As I said, if we get positive budget information, we certainly will continue to reexamine those, but there's no, nothing major like last year. That was kind of a one time to, okay, let's do some rearranging here and shore up some positions if we felt were necessary.
From a little, another different angle than Susan had, I think class size is also a function of the, the type of courses you're teaching, in terms of teaching stations and science and so forth. But it also, it also would have to do with the number of children who may have unusual management situations, because if you end up with, with increasing class sizes, the greater opportunity that you have for two or three or four of those children in the class, and if you have more than one that has unusual need for supervision, or to put it nicely, that there aren't, that usually then removes the teacher entirely from a lot of minutes in the classroom to manage those situations. And do you look at those at all in terms of the frequency of that? You may not know that until later on, when it's there, but it would seem to me that along with the gifted and talented and that, that sort of thing, that, that we need to have some kind of reserve budget for, for some of those, particularly in, particularly in elementary school where, where there's a principal and a TOSA and I'm interested in not having a TOSA be a, be an assistant principal to handle that. And so there needs to be some kind of flexibility maybe in our budget to be able to relieve some of those situations. I think, I don't know whether you have, where it's an educational assistant or, you know, some other kind of personnel that can, that can be an assistant to that besides the superintendent and the classroom teacher that already has 25 or 26.
I think, to answer your question generally, and you're right, and particularly if you have a small elementary school that only has, say, three sections in a particular grade, well then, is, is not as much flexibility. When you have a school that has five, six, seven sections, the principals work closely with the teachers on how those students are assigned, you know, and they take a great deal of thought in that as far as to make sure that those are manageable and so on. So it's a little bit more challenging when you don't have that many sections, but, so I think in general, yes, that is taken into account. Yes, we look at the guidelines, but I also, you know, when we meet with the principals and we take a look at those numbers, you know, a lot of it, yeah, they do know the makeup of that class. And so we are, we are constrained with budget, you know. I think if we had more funds available, might we have more sections in some of those grades? I think the answer is probably clearly yes. You know, we'd love to have even smaller class sizes and that would allow for that. So do we have a contingency? Well, no, we don't. The budget's that tight, but I think, I'm confident in the recommendation on the number of sections, that it's a manageable number and that we can, you know, educate the children there and provide, you know, we have lots of ways of providing supports.
Yeah, I was going a different direction from simply adding sections.
Okay.
But to having some kind of assistance that, that can be pupil management or, you know, kind of flexible across the various ranges. I, I, I know that, you know, experience I've had in watching classrooms like that, you know, with my, you know, when my granddaughter and other things are in school, is I remember one at Elvium School where, where, you know, my granddaughter says she's out of the room a lot and, and, you know, we don't get a lot of teaching done and so, so I, she says, why don't you come in and watch? So I got in there and I watched as grandpa, you know, sitting in the back of the room. And that, and that teacher had a class of about 28, but she had, she had one student with medication, periodic medication issues. She had another one that was clearly a behavioral issue and another one that had physical constraints. And if you had anybody else misbehaving or anything like that, that combination of things, I might, I noticed, I, after my third time observing, I, I noticed that, that about every hour, they were losing about eight minutes for teacher distraction for the second or the third student that was in that class. And if class sizes were smaller, you would reduce that frequency. And if you had, once the principal comes down and does it, that one's out of play and you have a lot of those in your building. I, you see what I'm driving?
Sure. And I guess what I'd say in general terms are focus is not to have staff to remove those children, is to work with them so that we don't have that, you know, those distractions in the classroom and, you know, there's.
Well, they do work with them, but that also distracts from 27 other kids often in the classroom too.
Well, I think it's a much more complex answer than that, but, but the idea is that yes, it is our responsibility to have the support that every child, you know, has, there aren't those distractions and that we can, you know, have, you know, teaching and learning going on that entire time. And yeah, there's certainly some that.
Everything will go well.
It, it's not, yeah, there's a lot more to it, you know, about how you handle that.
I mean, we do still have some special ed aides.
Oh, sure we do.
We have, I mean, there are different situations. I think there's some flexibility there, some of what you're talking about. There's thought given into how the kids are placed in classes and, I mean, and there's always more we can do, but I think, I think that people do pay attention to that, Susan.
Well, again, I appreciate that we have been able to have a discussion about other factors other than just the class size, because when you look at the numbers, it looks like that's what you look at. And that's kind of something that we can really see and then respond to. And again, in the past, there is a very strong history in the school district of looking at a variety of factors and that's why it's helpful to know that the teachers are making that recommendation as well. In the past, there was kind of a sequence that we followed and would be adding an assistant or assistance help to that classroom, either through a special ed teacher being involved in a proper classroom or an educational assistant, but there was kind of a sequence of things that followed. And actually, we split a class into groups of 16 because of other identified factors in that class and it wasn't a size issue. So we have, we have a history of doing that and I think that's been very beneficial to the kids in the district. The other thing, kind of off that piece, we did some shifting of staff kind of into administration in terms of literacy, a literacy coordinator or, so is that going to be a permanent position or do, I'm just saying, why don't you just at some point in time come back to us and just update us on what your plan for that is?
I guess every position, anytime is a new position, and that's what last year's staffing plan, there were a number of new positions or redefined positions. Certainly anytime with that, it would not just be a number, there'd be a report as to the rationale and so on, you know, for that. And so to, once they're, they are all permanent until we would recommend a change.
I'm talking, this was a transfer.
Well, the interventionists and the, yeah, I think, I think what you're asking would need to be taken up at a different time.
I just say, yeah, let's just.
Right, right, right. It needs to be taken up at a different time.
Sometimes it's as simple as needing to shift staff from building and.
Correct.
Just because that comes back to us, it's, it's helpful to know about that. And sometimes they end up, you know, maybe working for neutral.
You know, I, I thought at one point we had said we'd like to, because there were, the reading, the literacy model was pretty different this year with the interventionists. That's, that's what I thought, where I thought you were going. Because I think, I think we might like to hear how that's gone. And I'm kind of assuming we will when we get, you know, reports on the academics, the improvements or the not lack of improvement or whatever, because, because we did that model hoping we would be delivering services better, so.
Sure.
So I think that's what we were thinking we might get in the future, but Jessica?
Yeah, I agree, I went to the same place too, so.
Okay.
Got it. I misunderstood.
Okay. Dean, anything else? Okay, anything else on this? We did have a motion and a second, right? Okay. So if there are no further comments on the motion to approve the preliminary 2015-16 staffing plan as presented, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next is discussion and possible approval of a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of approximately $9,995,000, general obligation promissory note, series 2015A. And.
I'll turn it over to Jared. So today we actually did some refinancing, so this will be our fifth refinancing in the last five years. We had originally talked about how we had, thought we would save about $568,000. Well, it was an excellent day of bidding because we actually are seeing savings of $666,000. Now, this is all on Fund 39, so it's tax, property tax relief, doesn't directly benefit the budget, but it does show that we are doing our due diligence. So the winning bidder today was Robert Baird Company and we're going from a 4.25% interest rate down to a 1.04%.
Sounds like a what?
1.04.
Can I call on you on refinancing?
Yeah.
So based on all that and today's savings, we have saved over the last five years $2.9 million in interest. So this resolution is just authorizing us to continue with that, so.
All right. That sounds good.
So she only comes for the ask.
Yeah. She's the moshka tonight, so.
Dean, were you going to plan to make a motion?
I just want to ask, is, is, is that saving, has that already been anticipated in our budget plan?
So this savings is actually just pop property tax relief, because it's in Fund 39, so it's outside of our.
All tax, all property tax relief.
Yeah, again. But, okay.
Wish it wasn't Fund 10.
So could we have a motion for approval of the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of $9,995,000, general obligation promissory note, series 2015A as presented?
Go ahead.
Is there a second?
I can.
It's moved in seconded. Any further comments, Susan?
I think.
Jessica? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then, we have discussion and possible approval of a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of approximately $2,600,000, general obligation refunding of bonds, series 2015B, similar.
So I've asked for the, we approve the bond for our retirement benefits. And since it was retirement benefits, state statute requires us to only issue short-term notes and then we have the opportunity to refinance. So this resolution allows us to refinance to have that over the 20th year, to meet what we had originally talked about. So it's just a procedure of all.
Okay. So could I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of $2,600,000, taxable general obligation refunding bonds, series 2015B as presented?
No.
Okay, so moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in seconded. Any comments, Susan?
I, I would just say that as a member of the committee that worked on this, Dean and Susan and the children, they spent a year really coming to.
This being the retirement plan, right?
Figuring out how to fund it and how to try and do it in a very collaborative, fair way. This board, this interior board has spent incredible support of, every time we just get one and we move back to the table, I can't tell you how many times to try to make it there. So this represents, it's like a simple resolution. It's a process.
Just a question in general to ask, has the trust committee been formed? I, I understand that the, that the lawyer who put together an initial. I, I understand that the, that the lawyer put together an initial proposal from which you would get a request for proposal type of thing. It's done his work. But what is the general status of, of all of that, the mix of the? The trust committee, I understand, is the one that would be permanent as, as an instrument of our fiduciary responsibility to this retirement fund?
Yep. Yep. That will not be appointed until after the board approves the documents. And so we have the draft documents from the attorney. We're really close. We just have a couple of things to clean up with him. And so I would expect that next-
The attorney?
You're right. And I would expect to bring those documents forward to the board for approval. Once the board approves it, in that, those documents are the process for appointing that investment committee. And then at that point, we would go ahead and assign people.
So, so that, for one of a better term, that legal document, legal opinion, will encompass the fiduciary committee, the, the education policy, the investment policy, and the disclosure policy?
Um, somewhat. What we'll do is, it, it, one entire document is about the role of that investment committee. And one of the first jobs of that investment committee is to create the policy for how we invest funds and so on. So to answer your question, yes, all of those things will be addressed. Not all of them in these initial documents, but the procedure for how those things get done are all addressed in this document.
Will the attorney be the initial writer of each of those three documents down the pipe or?
Um, no, there are some suggestions about how we would go about that. And, and that, we'll talk about when these come to the board, certainly.
Because I've, you know, the expertise of a, of a citizen committee like that is, doesn't always have those kind of skills or particularly strong.
Right. Well, the committee would write them themselves. They would have an expert write them, obviously. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Does the committee have a motion to the committee of hold in April? We would have probably brought it tonight, but we wanted to follow the process of how we need to use that for the whole meeting. So what would we like to, for the committee to start working through? Education policy, investment policy, start issuing policies?
Are you getting names from committees and members and all sorts of things?
Um, we're getting a little bit off topic here. I think we, I think, yeah, I mean-
I'll ask that question. Yeah.
Oh, so maybe we'll just bring it to the-
Well, I think when they're ready to bring it forward, that would be the time to discuss all of this, really.
Yeah, it'll be on the next board agenda.
Right. And I think that's what we just heard, so, yeah. So it's, it hasn't moved and seconded that we approved the resolution as described. Any other comments? Just seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, there is none. Future agenda items? That will be one. The stuff you just talked about will be one. Future meeting dates, we have on April seventh, the election night. We have a long-range facilities planning committee. I just lost my screen there, okay. And I'm just checking to see these dates. Yeah, the dates have been updated. So we, policy committee on April eighth. And I did send this out to board members as a reminder that our, we normally meet the second and fourth Wednesdays, but because April has five Wednesdays and the spring break comes in there, our committee of the whole meeting of the board will be April fifteenth and the actual meeting of the board will be that last Wednesday on April twenty-ninth. Just so people make note of that.
I, just related to one of those committees, the teacher compensation committee meets next on April fourteenth. I did send out an email this afternoon and I copied the board on the informational meetings for all teachers prior to that. And so we're going to go consecutively every evening after spring break and into the next week, so we'll hit all five buildings. I, it was pointed out to me today that the idea was that a teacher could attend any of those meetings that happened to have a conflict the night it was in their buildings. And I might have to make some adjustments on a couple of times to allow, you know, access to those. So I'll do discuss now with the administrative team about making the adjustment at those times. But anyway, the dates have been sent to you late this afternoon in an email, so.
So we have the dates and times and the timelines.
Correct. Yeah, absolutely. Any board member would be welcome.
But, and then if you do change the times, obviously it'll-
I'll send out, yeah, yeah.
And if anything, it'd be later, not earlier. So that's helpful.
Correct. Yeah.
Dean, is there a conflict between the healthcare benefits meeting before the teacher compensation?
Uh, no, they're scheduled, the healthcare benefits is scheduled for ninety minutes and so we'll immediately-
Okay. Because I just knew that some of the teachers would might want to-
Yep, yep. So the, we'll stick to strict timelines on that.
All right. If there's no further business, is there a motion to adjourn? Some, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.